And welcome to the Town of Auburn Planning Board Meeting of Tuesday, March 27, 2018. Now called to address at approximately 7:00 PM. This meeting is being recorded and broadcasted live by Local Access Programming. Is there anyone here in the audience tonight that is recording tonight's meeting? There being none, please rise and join us in a salute to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all. At this time, I would like to remind the audience, applicants, town administration, and each of the planning board members to please refrain from asking questions in regards to all matters discussed this evening without first being granted my consent. We have a motion to open the public hearing.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
First thing on the agenda tonight is a discussion, 171 Hampton Street, request for waivers of site plan approval.
Anyone here for that? Hampton Street?
Yeah.
Just state your name and tell us about the project.
My name is Andy Boebel. I'm here representing Mrs. Jennifer and Mr. McKenzie. What they are looking for is to get an in-law apartment addition on their single-family house. And it's going to be like a one-bedroom, one-kitchen, and living room and a bathroom. Reason why they are applying for is because Mrs. Jennifer's mother used to be, used to live alone in Boston by herself, but she's kind of like getting old and got a special attention in here, and they are having her rather than leaving with them, so that's why they are applying therefore.
Ms. Jennifer?
Yes.
Tell us what we're here to. So what this is, is a site plan review based on a special permit received by the zoning board of bills recently, which was granted. Any special permit requirements requires site plan review, consequently as we've seen our several in-law apartments recently. Most cases for residential projects, these are put on as a discussion item as there are no, with a complete request for waivers at the same time, so I put this through the public hearing process, and it's already done that with the zoning board. So since we're only looking at design requirements for this, there's full request for waivers on this application, and this meets all the dimensional and zoning requirements as well. If the board is inclined to consider any landscape offers or any sort of lighting criteria, then that's the most, pretty much what we're looking at this evening.
So it's just the 16 by 24, or is it the other little room too?
The whole thing together, 700 square feet, is those, I mean, it's those two boxes that you can see there, it's not in the front, it'll go to the back.
Okay. Which house is this? Am I looking at the red house?
That's the white house, yes. So the addition's gonna be exactly right there on the left side.
There's enough land, sorry, through the chair, enough land.
Setback.
Setback, yes.
Through the chair, let me meet the dimensional requirement of the site, so.
Scott, any questions?
No questions.
John?
Yeah, just one. On the, can you bring up the planning in that place? And your plan there, if you look to the left of the proposed addition where it says it, it's the 16 feet, it'll be sized to 16 and a half. Is that actually gonna be a wedge-type house?
It looks like it. It does look wider at the.
It's wider toward the stockade fence.
Sixteen and a half.
Show me a question for the applicant.
Pick up the tape. One of the other ones on the apps.
Yeah, on the left side it says 16 and 16. On my plan, it is 16.6. I guess maybe the survey guy must do, make some correction there about there.
Just a question.
Two minutes, yeah. But doesn't stop.
Because it's not consistent through the plans, it goes back and forth.
You should probably correct it.
Yeah. Helps.
John, anything else?
No, that was it.
Wendy?
Yes, sir.
Looking for a motion.
On the second page, where it says Auburn Planning Board Paper Form, they weren't approved by the planning board, they were approved by the zoning board, correct?
Yes.
That should be corrected as well.
Yeah, that's the waiver request.
Is there any public comment?
They have the motion to grant waivers. Make the motion to grant the waivers.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Good luck.
Just through the chair, I just advised that you find a way to correct those square footage items prior to applying for your building permits.
Of course. Thank you very much.
How about working hours?
For, they already said, yeah. Much more popular design these days.
In-law apartments?
Yeah. Absolutely, makes a lot of sense.
Okay, so.
You guys see what I mean with the thing?
More people talking about. So, Mr. Chairman, if I may, just wanted to bring your attention that we have several continuances received recently. One of those is our 7 o'clock public hearing for Central One, receiving continuance requests to the next meeting. Did receive peer review comments from Graves Engineering, and Central One needed some time to make amendments to the plans in response to those peer review comments. On the public hearing for the Hammerhead Lot on 161 and 165 South Street also requested a continuance today, right towards the end of the day. They had to fine tune a handful of things on the plans also, and there was an ongoing item between setbacks that was resolved recently between the property owner and the building commissioner, so that has come to an agreement, and once the amendments are made, they should be able to present at our next meeting, so they requested continuance also. The other two items, or, sorry, one other item, they request continuance is our 8:00 PM hearing for 71 Curtis Street, and that's the subdivision, rescission, public hearing that we scheduled. Mr. Antonelli has been keeping me updated on a monthly basis as to the progress with his situation, and I requested a continuance to April 24th for that, so if the board wishes, you can vote on these continuances now, just to get them off our plate for the rest of the evening.
And we have the one for the Auburn planning for us to continue to April 24th.
Uh, that's, yes, that's the Curtis Street, yep. So the top two.
Top, 7:00 PM public hearing, Central One Federal Credit Union, 7:15, applicant Mark Mallett. 8:00 PM, Auburn Planning Board, 71 Curtis Street, continued to April 24th. The Central One and the Mark Mallett are continued to April 10th.
Make a motion to continue those hearings to April 10th?
We have a second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. There's a vote.
Thank you.
Okay. The next.
Unfortunately, Mr. Chairman, we have a little time in between. I was expecting Central One to be here, and I gave them a little extra time on our agenda, so we can cover minutes, and I do have an additional item under additional content that I can discuss.
Minutes of 1:918, 2:1318, and 2:27, last time one of them.
Just have the January 9th ones for now. They were in our March 13 package.
Make a motion to accept the minutes from January 9th?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
It is a vote.
Little Chair, Ms. Allen, or is anyone absent at that meeting? I don't have those minutes.
Me.
Okay, so one abstention. Thank you. So, Mr. Chairman, if I may, I have an item under additional contact.
Okay.
So I circulated an email from the Auburn Water District to the board. The Auburn Water District has their water tank project over on Lester Street that we approved a handful of months ago, and so far, they have completed one of the tanks, but they're going to be in the process of prepping the site and erecting the second tank, and the superintendent of the Water District is asking for the board's consideration to change its working hours, which were approved from 8:00 AM to 5:00 PM. They're looking for a 7:30 start if possible, and a 5:30, possibly even a 6:00 PM stop time during the day. This would allow them to cut somehow almost a month off the term of the entire project, and now typically, Mr. Smith would have been here this evening, but what I asked him to do was to provide a letter to this board, which I circulated in the email, and I asked him to notify the abutters if the board finds that to be manageable for this board. So I don't expect to have them submit for a site plan modification, should change construction hours, as long as they keep the board informed of when, what days they would need those hours.
When had he notified the abutters yet?
No.
No.
No, but if he provides me with proof of notification that the letters went out, I'd be happy to circulate that to the board also, so.
But we would want to hear the abutters first.
It's completely up to the board, so we'll be sure what you guys want to do.
Good Chair, isn't that in the middle of a residential neighborhood?
It is. Well, Mr. Smith said that the neighbors have been very cooperative, everyone's been great to deal with so far, they haven't been any complaints, there's been none received in our office for that matter, so maybe the 8:00 PM was a good time, maybe 7:30, like too early, I don't know, it's the board's purview if you want to.
My feeling is, the extension at the end of the day is easier than the one earlier in the morning, because you don't know who's living there, what age, and what time they get up, and, you know, it's only half an hour, but it does cut a month off the project when we, if we allow it, but we do, are gonna do it without allowing the abutters to come to a public hearing and be heard.
I will say, Mr. Chairman, that on occasion, if a developer has like a delivery or something coming in that's unique, and it shows up, either, or it's gonna show up early, I always encourage them to just notify us at Town Hall. Sometimes that's an isolated incident, or it's just one day. Other times where it's a public safety issue, like if they have a hole open in the road and they need to stay on site to finish something before they fill it in, sometimes those hours can extend longer, but those are usually one-to-two-day instances.
Do you, how many abutters were there?
Oh geez.
Well, that goes, because even gets the ones across the street on Bryn Mawr Avenue would even be included, because the piece goes right down to Bryn Mawr.
Right, yeah, the ones that are.
You got some on the side, and you got some in the back.
Yeah.
And on Lester Street.
I'm mostly concerned about the ones where the access is, and that's sort of that Archridge Hill Road next to the Victorian House, so I gave it a name, but I don't think it's a real street, but it says it on the map, so I'm okay with it, it's just, I'd like to get a more detailed schedule of what days these would be, I think he was.
Can they wait till the next meeting?
I mean, I think he was looking for the board's blessing as soon as possible to try to get that going.
Is there any way you can contact the abutters and see if there's any voice of opinion from them, and then we can?
I don't think I really thought you'd do that. I mean, I could, and it's another problem, but I don't think I could do it on behalf of the board without reporting back to you, you know? That would take us to April 10th anyways.
Did you mention why this came up, and why we didn't talk about it, we didn't see this ahead of time?
Yeah, when they're bringing in independent contractors, folks from all over, they're based, starting at 7:00 AM, so sometimes they're sitting on site, just idling for an hour or so, and just getting paid for it, so.
So they didn't know this, they, improperly?
Well, I think, through the chair, that a lot of developers aren't used to the 8:00 AM start in the first place.
Right.
So, we were implementing it in this case, because I think someone brought to our attention, there was a school bus stop at the bottom of the street, so.
And the time savings they're estimating, does he have that in writing for you?
Just, just in a letter, I don't have.
Do you know, has the, because of this, has the construction timeframe slipped, or is this a true savings of time off of what the original ending of it was?
From what I understand, this would allow them to finish in May, and that would.
It's not making up the lost time, is what we're saying.
I don't believe so.
To me, it's a half hour ahead of time, an hour at the end, I don't, it seems like an even trade for me to save a month off the project.
I was.
I have a problem with it.
I was thinking this would be done before school got out this way, but.
Scott?
I don't have any issues with it.
John?
Is this Monday through Friday, or Monday through Saturday?
It's Monday through Friday for the 7:30 to 5:00, and then the Saturday times would be just, I think we only have that for 8:00 to noon, I don't think that's changed.
Every construction site in the world starts at 7:00, this is the only town, I've lived here for 40 years, it starts at 8:00. We've all started at 7:00, I started at 6:00.
That's special.
Get that right, that's my life. I don't have a problem with it, if it's gonna save a month, and like you said, it might get done before school lets out, and I know you don't have kids playing on the street when they're going in.
Well, all we can do is if there becomes some major problem, we can revisit it.
Address it.
Call them in. Call them in and stop it, or whatever.
Good with that.
So I don't have a problem with Presley, and I just don't like to forego the rights of the people to come to their public hearing.
If he gets contact with all the abutters, and they don't have a problem, or he lets you know, then I don't have a problem.
If it helps the board, in addition to the letter from the Water District, I could draft some tips to the abutters, just stating what we discussed this evening, and saying that this is just a, for the reasons that we're doing it.
Wendy?
I'm fine.
You're okay?
I'm good.
Do we have a motion?
Make a motion to modify the work hours.
I'll second it.
Monday through Friday, 7:30 to 5:30.
Six. He said six earlier. Yeah, 5:30 or even six. Hang on with the board.
What do you want to do?
Six.
Six.
Six. Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. There's a vote.
Thank you.
Let's resume that one, put a home run, and then just say, and then if there's any problems, tell me.
Okay. So they'll send a letter, and all those will.
And explain that to Mr. Kent.
We have three minutes before we can take anything else, Mr. Chairman, you want to take a short recess?
Associate member, Will, if you know anybody, let them know, ask them to come and see Matt. Additional content, nothing else, minutes, we're done, next meeting, April 10th. Take a short recess, do we have a motion to go into a recess till 7:20?
Make that motion?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Make that motion?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We have a 7:20 PM, an amendment of the Auburn zoning bylaws, section 3.7, prohibited uses to add section 3.7.7, recreational marijuana.
Thanks, Mr. Chairman, first of all, I apologize for making this a 10-minute public hearing. So what this is.
Speak slowly.
A prohibition for the sales of recreational marijuana throughout the Town of Auburn. This has in no way any impact to the personal consumption laws that were passed in November of 2016, this is only in regards to the commercial sales of recreational marijuana, not medicinal marijuana. Medicinal, we already have a bylaw, recreational, we needed to create one. So in November of 2016, when the, at the state election.
The state passed.
On question four, the state passed, and Town of Auburn was slightly in favor of that also. In May of 2017, we put a ballot question on for our town election, and that was to prohibit the sales with the exact language you're seeing here in front of you today. Question was yes or no, and the ban was passed by the voters, so we also have a moratorium to create a recreational marijuana bylaw, which we can still continue to work on, but in the meantime, while it continues to be a hot item of discussion across the state, we're following the tune that was advised to us by several entities that have been educating me on recreational marijuana bylaws, to produce this bylaw, which is an exact reflection of the ballot question, and listed under our prohibited uses. So that's what you're seeing before you're here today, is the exact language from the ballot question, with the exception of one word that I added, that I'm waiting for the Attorney General to be okay with. It reads, "The recreational marijuana under 3.7.7," this is prohibited uses, Town of Auburn prohibits operations of all types of," and I added this word, "non-medical marijuana establishments." When it just reads marijuana establishments, and we have a medicinal marijuana bylaw, I did not want that to be conflicting, so I listed non-medical there in front of it, just to be safe. I put that question in front of the Attorney General yesterday to see what his response is, but she hasn't come back to me yet. However, the planning board votes to support this article for town meeting warrant, we can still make changes on the floor if the Attorney General comes back and says that we can't include that word.
And that's your only question, right?
That's the only question I have.
Is can you include the word "non"?
Correct, the non-medical word, yeah. Otherwise, it would have just read, "All marijuana establishments as defined under that section," which is a.
I'll read this.
You can, yeah, by all means.
3.7.7 reads recreational marijuana. The Town of Auburn prohibits all, prohibits operations of all types of non-medical marijuana, the "non-medical" being added by Matt, prior to that, it just said all types of marijuana establishments, as defined in GL, Chapter 94, Section 1, including marijuana cultivators, marijuana testing facilities, marijuana product manufacturers, marijuana retailers, or any other type of licensed marijuana business. That would be the way the new bylaw for, we, the town would be, we, the planning board would look to either approve it, or.
Is this in lieu of the moratorium? Moratorium, I believe, will still remain active, regardless if this prohibition is allowed, which we don't know yet for any town within the Commonwealth that the prohibition will be allowed despite the ballot questions we took.
Does it?
If it's, if, even if what we're doing is exactly the way they.
Does this violate?
No.
What was allowed by the vote?
No.
In the state election? It doesn't?
That's what's up in the air, I guess, in a sense.
That's the question.
But what we're being advised is no. So, anything could change, and since the Cannabis Control Commission just released their regulations, not 10 days ago, so we're following exactly the beat that we were supposed to, we're gonna put this in front of town meeting now, instead of waiting to see what happens to all the other towns, we're trying to take the lead on this. There's a, the will of the voters, if it passed in our town, I mean, I'm not inclined to go against that. I know several surrounding communities are, have made some pretty good money off the cultivation side of it in the area, but that's, I don't think that's for me.
What did you say about the will of the voters?
If it passed on our ballot to ban it, I'm not inclined to go against it.
The ballot did pass, go against it.
Correct.
Yep. John? Wendy?
For my own education, are we just supporting this just out of, just for kind of a solidarity, or do we actually have a, some type of vote or requirement on this?
The planning board has to do this for any zoning bylaw, and that's just Mr. Allo, came from the selectmen as their recommendation after it was drafted, goes to the selectmen, then to the planning board, and then to the warrant. It's gonna go to the warrant regardless, just whether or not it has the planning board's support or not, and it's usually a key factor when the town meeting voters are making their Bear in mind, this has no impact on the medicinal marijuana bylaw that was created in 2016.
So if we want to create the recommendation to the Board of Selectmen on this, do we do it with minus, "non-medical," or do you want to include that, and if it gets thrown out, then it just goes to the medical? Would that happen, Scott?
No, I think what Matt put in there for the "non-medical" is because we already have bylaws established for the, for the medicinal uses. The real question is, is if this will even be allowed by the state, which is what we don't know yet.
Any of it?
Any of it.
But then there's also the part, will they allow the "non-medical," which he placed in, which they did not have here.
Correct. Correct, so that's two things.
So if we're gonna vote to approve, to give a recommendation to the selectmen, do we need it now, or can we wait till the next meeting, when you may have an answer back from her?
We, in theory, could wait till the next meeting also.
Do you have a preference?
I think it's okay as is, if the Attorney General thinks that there's an issue with the word "non-medical."
So if we vote to approve it as such, as written by you, and she denies it, then we'll have to take another.
Yeah, she can't deny the, this, yet, until town meeting takes a vote, she doesn't get that kind of review until town meeting votes to approve it. I just bounce this offer just in case, to see if that word is an issue, because they said it has to be verbatim from the ballot, but I added that word, just so it differentiates from our medicinal marijuana bylaw. If she wants me to strike that, that's fine, but I don't need the planning board to see that first, they could strike that on the floor at town meeting.
All right. You okay?
I'm fine. Put it alone.
Okay. I'm also in favor to ban it.
Okay, so we're looking for a motion to.
Do we have a motion?
Support.
To support this amendment.
I'll make the motion to support the amendment as presented.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
No.
There's a vote. Good dick. 7:30.
Yes, 7:31.
We have a 7:30 applicant, Leif Azuni, requesting site plan approval under section 3.2.6.0 of the Auburn zoning bylaws, to operate a dental office with associated parking on property located at 838 Selfridge Street. Is the applicant present?
Yes.
Would you please state your name and address?
Mr. Chairman, before we do, sorry, just want to make sure we motion to open, and then I can describe the project.
Do we have a motion to open this public hearing?
Motion.
All those, okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
If I may, before the applicant speaks, just want to describe what's in front of us today and how we got here. So, all we have is site plan approval application for use that is allowed by site plan review in the Highway Business District. A special permit for rendering impervious 15% of the lot within the Aqua Fort Two District was obtained from the ZBA recently, so I don't believe the decision's been written yet, but it was voted and approved, and one of the conditions of that approval was that a peer review be conducted for this project for the stormwater analysis, since there's going to be a parking lottery in the project. So, I have solicited bid from Burton Engineering, our regular peer review consultant, Graves Engineering, has worked on several projects.
with us right now. I thought it would be advantageous to engage Burton for this project for time. So Burton provided us with an estimate, which I have provided the applicant. And a peer review will be engaged on this project one way or the other. So, just wanted to make that clear. I'm sure that when the applicant makes his presentation, we can answer the details. So, that's the project overview and we can proceed from there.
Good evening. My name is Imad Zerain from DeValle Zerain. I'm a civil engineer. The applicant couldn't be with us tonight. He's away. As Matt stated before you with an application for site plan approval, the project is located at 838 Southbridge Street, which is an existing single-family home that's actually boarded up. And my client bought it. It was slated to be demoed and something else was gonna go on, but they kept it and he's actually just renovating. The applicant has a business currently in town at 390 Southbridge Street, right down the street, right behind Dunkin' Donuts in that building in the back. He's an oral surgeon. He'd like to renovate this building and move his business into his office. He's a soil operator by himself. So part of the site plan approval, we have to provide parking for the actual square footage. We're required to provide eight parking spaces, which were shown off Tinker Hill Road, eight spaces with a single handicap parking space, parking space, and an accessible sidewalk to the front door. Currently, the existing front door to the house is fronting on Southbridge Street. We're gonna be closing that off and creating a new main door to the building that's facing Tinker Hill Road. As Matt stated, we've been before ZBA for the rendering more than 15%. We're low over 30% with the impervious cover. The existing house and the two parking spaces that's on Southbridge, they're about 20% yet. In rendering the 30% impervious, we're providing a stormwater recharge on site. We're actually recharging the entire 100-year storm event, picking up the roof runoff, the parking lot runoff, going into a storm scepter to clean it, and then directing all into a below-ground recharge system. We're providing all new water and sewer connections, because the building was going to be demoed, so those existing services were cut off. So we'll be doing that and...
Where is, excuse me, where is the water and sewer in Tinker Hill?
On Tinker Hill, yes. But the existing one have been cut and capped, and so we're proposing new connections. And we're also on, if you bring the landscape plan, we're proposing pretty much as required by zoning, number trees and buffering and what have you among the both street fronts. That's pretty much...
Did you do any groundwater tests there?
We have not. We looked at the soil map.
Probably, pretty high.
Is it?
Well, it's all wet across the street and upwards, but...
Looking at the state's soil maps, it says it's between nine and 10 feet. There's a basement in the existing house and it's dry.
Because that hill and back might've been gravel at one point.
Probably, yeah, that's probably what they took it off, yeah. The soil is classified as loamy sand in that area. That's pretty much it, the presentation.
Eight parking spaces is required. Scott? John?
Yeah, on the landscape plan, there's where it says 6GT for the thornless many locusts. How high do those grow? You have a height on the rest of everything except for the after he returns daily, which doesn't grow more than a couple feet. Usually get a sightline coming out of that driveway to your left. To the right, it's the U's and it's only 24 to 36 you'd be able to see over those.
You're suggesting it won't block the lights?
Yeah, you'd be able, no, not just the light. When you come out of that driveway and you wanna take a right on Tinker Hill Road to go to Southbridge, I mean, to Route 20, you won't be able to see anybody coming down Tinker Hill Road.
When you look to the left, right?
You look to the left coming out of the driveway, take a right.
We could move it back, move the tree back a little bit.
Yeah, 'cause they all grow and then they'll be encroaching on the roadway.
Yeah, yeah, we'll move it back.
I mean, it's gonna be a definite major improvement to the site.
Absolutely.
That was my only. And you already asked a question about the water and sewer stuff.
I'm surprised Tinker Hill's got that water and sewer. Wendy?
What's up?
Jason?
Looks great. I have one question because I could not find an answer to it, Mr. Chairman. Wouldn't happen if I've been able to find the status of that section of Tinker Hill Road as public or private way, because I can't find it anywhere.
That's the survey. I mean, it needs some work, that's for sure.
It does.
My client asked me if, I would ask you guys to do anything about it. I said, "I don't think the planning board will not have just..."
It's just not our purview.
I can't find if that's private or public. I know Tinker Hill is public to a certain point in the back, but it seems to be maintained to Maple Street, but this little section, I can't find it anywhere. So...
It's been there forever.
Yeah, but who plows it now?
I don't know if it's plowed at all.
It's plowed.
You mean, when you come down Tinker Hill from above?
Yeah.
And you would take a left on Maple and back of the old truck stop?
Yeah.
Or you could go straight for that short distance?
Right.
That's been there for the 60-something years I've been here.
It's just holes. I don't know.
I just think because there was nobody, and maybe because some of the people don't wanna increase any traffic up there.
And the house has been abandoned.
Yeah.
The house fronts on Highway 12 or 20 and...
Reason I ask, Mr. Chairman, is if this is a public way, and we know if there's a business going in, I'd love to see this section of road get on the street improvement list like this year. It's one of the worst-conditioned roads I've seen, just for that little stretch.
Probably, where's Maple? Right where it starts the radius to the right, right there. Probably no more than 200. Dick, you don't have any idea?
Welcome this house?
Yeah, well, the section of Tinker Hill...
I'll put this up.
From, if you come down from up above, and you're right from where you take Maple Street intersects, if you, that little section that goes from Maple to Route 20, that was always...
That was always there. My mother was there back in 1912 and was there then.
Oh.
That used to be the Comasi House. The grandfather of David Comasi.
Don't get me wrong, when I say I wonder if DP Devil will improve this, they're gonna improve it because this is being built. Like, that's not how that works. But I'm just curious if it's status, 'cause if we do determine it as a public street, I'd love to see it.
'Cause it'll look right there in that section right there.
It would only help this business.
That's because that's the apron coming off when they just did the highway.
Correct.
And that's state land, Olivia.
See, it's not...
Stops right there and then it just gets rusted.
Through the chair, my question is, if it is a private road, who owns the private road?
Both sides of it.
To the center.
So the, if it is a private road, each abutis can pay half and fix it up to the back of the parking lot.
And continue to maintain it coming forward.
If the other abutis, which would be Burger King, wants to share.
Yeah, since they don't have access to it.
Excuse me, that's always been that way, just like Albert Street, named after my grandfather. That was a private way until we decided to think of it a public way. But everything was private back then. Used to be a tinker at the end of that street, and we did this small little jobs, and that's why it was called Tinker Hill. And that building that he's gonna, which is the old Comasi House, used to be a, the first room of it was a store. Yeah, they missed the Comasi had a store, and then the building on the other part of the house. It's always been there, nice, 80 years before that. It's always been probably private.
I just couldn't find it.
Thank you.
Not through the chair, just couldn't find a town meeting vote to say that they accept this as a public way.
See, ask Bill what he thinks.
Yeah, well, he...
Ask him, maybe he'll say. What'd he say?
We're both not seeing what we wanna see. So, if I can find more about it and find out if it is public, maybe it was done in cursive handwriting way back when, but that's a...
That's a task.
It would help increase traffic at the Blaker project, too. Sure. Well, that's another thing, I'm glad you mentioned it, Scott, because that's something that Bill says, says perhaps if the other subdivision ever evolves, then this would be one of those improvements. So...
That we could ask for.
Right. But at the same time, I feel for a business that wishes to develop a site that's, you know, vacant, boarded up for a long time. It's been a nice, so I'd love to see this thing renovated, but you're bringing a driveway off onto a pretty obvious section of road, and I sympathize with that. But otherwise, I don't have any comments on this, other than that it just has to go through standard peer review process.
Any public comment? Scott? John?
What's up?
Great. Hello, sir?
So we're just looking for a continuance till the next meeting so we can engage...
Continue to the 10th?
Correct.
Make a motion to continue the hearing to April 10th?
Second.
Those in favor?
Aye.
It is a vote. Okay. Next public hearing, 7:40. The applicant is Seaboard Solar Holdings LLC requesting site plan approval under Section 9.4.1 of the Auburn zoning bylaws for the development of a 5.0 megawatt solar faldalic installation on five separate parcels on property located at 476 and 500 Lester Street. This was continued from February 27th. We also have a 7:50 PM public hearing. The applicant is Sweb Development USA LLC requesting site plan approval under Section 9.4.1 of the Auburn zoning bylaws for the development of a six-megawatt photovoltaic solar installation located at 430 Rochdale Street. At this time, I will recuse myself from both the 7:30 and 7:40 public hearing, and Jason will take over as chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Brooks. The 7:40 hearing. Come on up. Just please.
All right, so...
Matthew, go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, we have engineers from Seaboard Solar as well as Mr. Rodriguez of Seaboard Solar as well. Just wanted to bring us up to speed on where we're at. There has been a full peer review on the project. There has been, the applicant's here to redress the remaining comments on that peer review. We've gone through many aspects of this project. There's still ongoing review with the Conservation Commission. They have a hearing tomorrow night. The Conservation Commission was waiting for the peer review to be concluded, the planning board to be satisfied with the comments within that peer review. If that just so is to happen this evening, we can thank you very much. We can notify the Conservation Commission tomorrow evening so that they can proceed with their application. The other item outstanding, and I'm sure we'll talk about later, is just communications with the town of Lester, and I believe Mr. Rodriguez was speaking with them earlier today, and you can elaborate further, just for the construction traffic and construction vehicles.
So tonight, there's no specific vote for us, just really updating the Conservation Committee?
Depends on other board officials.
All right. Go ahead.
For the record, Nick Fassandola, Level Design Group. With me is Pedro Rodriguez from Seaboard Solar. So we last left you guys with updated plan, first comment response from Graves Engineering. Graves reviewed our response to that initial round, and they had four additional comments, which responded to in a March 14th letter to the board. Graves then responded to that letter, saying they're essentially all set, I had to relabel one contour, which was, I missed a keystroke or something on the computer. So, essentially, clean bill of health on the engineering review. I can go over the Graves comments, those four comments and the changes that were made to the plan. We can start there.
Just please.
So, essentially, making our way through the comment letter, the comment number three from Graves' original comments, which was regarding the site access. It was the general comment. We responded when we created all these new access drives throughout the site that we went over last time. The one comment that Graves had on the revised plan was that they felt the slopes in some of the turnaround areas were a little too steep, so we regraded those to maximum 4% within these turnaround areas. And they also noted that they'd like to see this hammerhead turnaround be larger to accommodate a fire truck, a standard truck. So that was previously 58 feet wide. We increased that to 118 feet wide down here, so kind of realign this driveway and just kind of spread this out a little bit. The access also dealt with the proximity of these panels along this driveway here. So these ones that I marked red, those were shifted over to this area here to allow a larger vehicle to make the small radiuses, and especially this sweeping radius down through here of the driveway. So, those are the major changes that we did to the plan to address comment number three with regards to the access. So that'd be the slope and the interference of those panels to the turning radius of that driveway. So then there had four additional comments, which are detailed in 31 through 34 in my March 14th letter. So there was a mislabeled contour up in this section. That was corrected. It was labeled 210. It should've been a 212 contour, so that was corrected. The comment 32 has to do with the hammerhead area, which I just described. We increased the size of that hammerhead from 58 feet to 118 feet and kept a 4% slope across that, that would comply with the requirements for turning movements of the emergency vehicles. Comment number 33 was regarding specifically this panel here, on how a large vehicle would make that sweeping turn. In looking at it, I decided to move these four additional panels, because we did have some space on that side. So we went ahead and did that to make that driveway a little bit more easy to navigate. And essentially, in Lot 30, question comment number 34 was just a correction in the stormwater narrative. A line was deleted by accident, and that was corrected. And that pretty much addresses what were the outstanding comments from the Graves Engineering review. In addition to those changes, we made some additional changes to the plan based on our previous meeting. On the erosion control sheet, I added a note about the erosion control entrance here. So a more detailed note saying that prior to construction taking place on the entire site, the entrance is to be built. So the paved apron, the clearing, and the grading of that. And once that's completed, we'll install the erosion control entrance, the gravel entrance off the back edge of the pavement. So that's detailed on the Lot 1 site plans on the erosion control sheet. So that's detailed on the lot one site plans, on the erosion control sheet. And then there was some comment, there was a comment from one of the butters about the compaction of the driveway. So I added an additional note to all the plans, the five separate plans, on the detail of the gravel entrance, that it's to be compacted to a 95% compaction, typical roadway construction standard for base layer, so we don't know, we're not telling them how to get to it with the X amount of weight of a certain type of roller. It just has to meet that compaction standard. So it's more of a, it's an easier thing to trace, instead of kind of giving somebody, you have to use a certain piece of equipment, or you have to try and do it this way. They have to hit that compaction number on the driveway. I believe that pretty much addresses all the changes that were made to the site plans. Pedro did coordinate with the Town of Lester. He sent them correspondence. I don't know if you can speak to that.
Yes, I, I know last minute we talked about the trucking route, which, you know, I know is going to have to be finalized before submitting the application for the building permit, but I talked to Michelle Buck, who is the town planner of Lester. I talked to her over the phone, explaining to her that we're still, you know, in the process of getting the municipal approvals for the project, but, you know, if we were to obtain the approvals, you know, we expect to begin construction by the end of the year. Due to the low bridge located in Abworth, we're not able to access it from Lester Street. So I sent her the trucking route that we have right now, and told her that we'll be accessing the site from Abworth Street for a period of three or four months during the construction. But then after that, the regular access point will be from Abworth, that's the easiest way to get to the site. And she had no issue not coming. She just told me to send her the trucking route, and I told her that we'll send her a detailed construction schedule and a detailed trucking route at the same time that we submit to the building department. And if anything were to happen in one of those residential streets, we'll work something out with it on Lester. And she had not come. That was it. And I sent, you know, an email summarizing the conversation, a copy man, a copy de con.
Great, thank you. So Scott, I guess make comments on the recent changes that everything was presented there today. Does that sound to you?
Everything sounds fine, Jim. Have we seen the structural stability on the bridge? The report says it's to be provided. I don't know, I guess.
This dossier report's already done. It's been done for a couple of weeks. And, yeah, it came back, you know, the same thing that we were expecting. I can say a copy of it, it's like 200 pages or something, you just-
No, it just said it was to be provided, and I hadn't seen it in anything.
But the, you know, it said that, you know, the maintenance of the bridge are structurally sound. There are a few rivers that will probably have to be replaced, but the major improvement will be replacing the deck with a concrete cast and railings. You know, the rehabilitation design is still underway, but the structural work was all done.
John?
Yeah, you said you made the changes to the driveway entrance that was going to be paved, but that's not what your plan said. Your plan's saying one gravel construction entrance, and the other one, it still says trucking pavement, which I still don't know what that is. I've never heard that term in my-
Through the chair, there's some specs on one of the pages that they show the trucking asphalt, is that right? I thought I was looking-
It's labeled right here. As first 20 feet of driveway from the existing edge of pavement to be paved with trucking pavement. And when you go to C-3.1, it says gravel construction entrance, 30 by 50 feet wide, gravel construction, it's to be shifted to the edge of new driveway apron after paired apron is constructed. Unless that's supposed to be paved apron, which would be trucking pavement, which I still don't know what that is.
I think that's on-
It would be paved.
C-41.
Correct.
Right up here. That's a cross section.
Correct. So you can see, if you zoom in a little closer to the top right, where it says top and binder.
Yeah, is this done in the beginning or at the end of the job?
Uh, that's going to be done in the beginning, yeah. So in the construction sequencing on that same sheet, it says, "Construct driveway entrance." So install the sedimentation barriers, and then the second item is construct the driveway entrance, which would be graded, clear the trees, do the site clearing, the site distance clearing, and get that area paved. Thank you.
Wendy?
You said you had confirmation by email with the Town of Lester, that there was a conversation, that nothing would be okay.
Yes, Mr. Rodriguez just confirmed that through the chair, that after we spoke with Michelle Buck, that provided confirmation that they spoke, and she was, you see that email?
I have one more question. Scott, what up the bridge? Was that provided to the peer review company?
No, because it was not done at the time, but-
Should we have a look at it?
They don't do structural review.
It's not that kind of really new. We need a different consultant for that. If the board wants to, that's up to the board, you know?
I mean, that's going to be done, you know, in a separate building permit. It's going to be a completely different contractor. It's going to be like a different approval.
Yeah, that more falls underneath the building, it's a structure, so that would fall, any improvements made to that bridge falls under the guise of the building code. So a building inspector would, you know, at that point, review the report, send it out to a third party review if they choose to, and, you know, coordinate in that fashion. Like I said, they, right now, they've done a, essentially, inventory study of the existing structure, and they're still waiting on the design of the improvements to the bridge.
So, we have the purview of the commissioner, we can make sure that that's done.
Great, so what are we looking for now?
All right, I just had a couple of comments that I, after reviewing the plan after we went and I spoke, just wanted to bring these up. I was reviewing with the building commissioner, and he had a couple of ideas, just wanted to bring some of you guys. I know there's a gated access to this at night that'll be closed off, or at least a key to gate entry, I don't know if you guys will be using a gate or not. So I wanted to make sure that a key was provided to both the Auburn and Lester fire departments in case-
Yeah, the big-
And, um, you guys just mentioned this with the trucking pavement at the entrance, just wanted to be sure that that was in place before clearing were to take place for kind of the large parts of the, of the project. Now, this is something I, it's more of a question, because I'm not sure what this is. And forgive me if I'm saying this wrong, but, um, stone tire wash, is this some?
Yep.
Okay, you might want to elaborate some on that, but as vehicles are exiting the site, there would be something to that effect prior to getting onto the public way?
It'd be before the paved driveway.
That's something that, um-
So they don't track mud out into the street?
So that's the construction entrance. That's the gravel construction entrance. There should be a, the detail on sheet, C-4.1 for lot one. So, let's see, right there, the top, right there, top middle, a little flared end, so that gives you the size of the riprap, the length of the driveway. You got to put a little hump in it. It has little notes, you know, if it's, if it appears as it's getting clogged up, silted up, you know, you dig it out and replace it as needed. You know, and if you're near an adjacent wetland, or you're going to be draining it off to the side, you put a little hay bale check dam, you know, to kind of filter any collected water.
I didn't know what that was, so I wanted to bring it up when he, when he told me that. And just a feedback on the, we saw, I saw straw waddles versus hay bales, and straw waddles are obviously a lot cleaner and a lot easier to use, but, um, given near, I've never dealt with a slope on a subdivision like this, that being like for residences in the past, so given the volume of clearing, et cetera, do you think waddles would be, with the silt fence, would be sufficient for handling runoff versus, I don't know, if hay bales thicker, more efficient? Just wanted to get your feedback on that.
We do have the intermediate erosion controls, as requested by Graves, every 100 feet or so on slopes in excess of 15%, I believe. So, you know, it's not just we have 300, I mean, 1,000 feet of clearing, and then just one, one perimeter line. Typically, there shouldn't be any issues, because there's not going to be an extreme amount of exposed soil, you know, they're going to go through, cut, chip, and spread, so that's going to minimize any potential, you know, sediment from being run off to the site after the chipped or spread. But, you know, there are areas that are being worked, the graded areas, and, you know, that's one of those things where if it doesn't seem like it's working during construction, I mean, we'll be under a full NFTs permit, so we'll have to comply with that, and Conservation will be doing inspections, so, you know, we may need to add additional layers of erosion controls, or even temporary sediment basins in some places, or temporary swales, you know. It's one of those things that you plant it the best you can, but, you know, until you get out there, and if there is an issue, you know, you address it, because you have to, you know, under your NFTs permit and your stormwater pollution prevention plan, so, you know, we'll be monitoring that on a weekly basis.
So we hadn't really talked about, like, basing construction or anything like that, but I assume you guys are looking at trying to do the bridge first, once you get in there?
Yeah, I mean, the situation with the bridge is that it costs us a lot more money to do the structural report than what we expected. And the rehabilitation plan is a lot more than what we expected too. I mean, the, it's the same scenario that we thought, it's just the cost of the rehabilitation is a lot more. So, like I said, the structural report is all done, the prewatch rated, it's structurally sound, and it's the top fix, but it's on hold until we get municipal approvals. So once we get municipal approvals, then we know the project is moving forward, and then we'll complete the rehabilitation design, and then we're going to hire this, we're using an engineering, which is the one that does the structural rehabilitation for the MAST DOT, and we're going to use one of the contractors to the rehabilitation of the bridge. So I'm sure those guys are going to be submitting the same, the proper application to the building department to make a stand.
That's a good company, good reputation. That's good. So a perfect world, bridge, stormwater management, then clearing, I mean?
Yes.
Okay. All right, just want to make sure those are in place, obviously, before you guys clear the whole site. And I just want to reflect some of the things you and I talked about earlier, which was, I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, I'm full of things, it's still my, my time to shine, so we were talking about securing finances prior to clearing, but it's more along the lines of securing acceptance into the SMART program prior to clearing.
Yes.
And the board would be requiring, and something we talked about earlier, but haven't talked about much since, was a performance bond for decommissioning the solar, right? Upwards anywhere between 125 or 150% of the actual cost for decommissioning estimate would be provided by the applicant at a time later, and then provided to the board for our approval, kind of like we would for a subdivision project, and we could approve the bond prior to any other clearing that would take place. So, those are a couple of big ones anyways. The only other thing I have, Mr. Chairman, was, oh, and, I'm sorry, two things. One was to provide the construction schedule, once it's finalized, to the board for review at a public hearing prior to the building permits. And road improvement bonding, you mentioned with the Town of Lester, if you guys do any road noticeable, it was clearly the pothole fell off from behind the tire kind of thing, that you guys would fix the road as you go, but Auburn and Lester might want to collaborate on that, and so, I don't know if it's going to be a bond request or a funding request of a certain dollar value for mediation, and if it just doesn't reach that, then there might be a return to you anyway, so. Something just to protect the condition of the public ways and of volume of construction. Those are some of the bigger things that I had. But, so I guess it's in the board's purview, and I'll just, I'll probably comment what to do with the project, and there being pending conservation approval, that being tomorrow, the inconvenience of that, and us just advising them that the peer review is complete. I don't know what direction they're leaning or anything like that, it's not typical that I would, so. Seems like we got a lot of the big stuff done, though, and it's just a matter of getting CONCOM approval first, because that's typically how this works. And collaborating with the Town of Lester to make sure that they're satisfied, I see those as two of the remaining things left. Don't see much else to cover, but unless the board sees others.
I have one more question.
Shoot.
We went into the stone wash for the wheels.
Mm-hmm.
That shows you're going into a gravel entrance, and you said the construction entrance was gravel. Am I mistaken, isn't the construction entrance off of Lester Street, which is going to be your main entrance at the end? Aren't they wanting the same?
Correct.
So which is it? Is it a gravel entrance or a paved entrance?
All right. We're going to pave it, but before we can do that, we need to make improvements, probably a couple of weeks worth of work. We have to do some clearing, we're going to have to do some regrading in this, in that area. The first thing, before they do any of that, they're going to put gravel down, so in case there is, we don't want anything tracked on the road, you know, protecting the road. So once they get this initial entry area, you know, probably up to 100, 200 feet into the site, so they can have some area to maneuver, get that cleared, do all this clearing, then we'll pave. Then we'll push the 20-foot, or whatever, however wide it is, I think it's 20 feet, the apron.
Behind the pavement.
Correct, so we'll have the apron, and then we'll pad the gravel construction entrance behind the apron.
Okay.
I mean, we, just to clarify, we could take condition, you know, the apron to be installed prior to, you know, major lot clearing or something like that, because we have to do some clearing to make some room up there, to get in there, you know, to get the, to get the equipment in there and do, you know, the minor grading and the clearing along the roadway, but, yeah, we don't, we're not looking for them to do any major work hauling trees out of there until that's set, and, you know, the whole point in putting that in there is to protect the roadway, so, you know, it's one of those things where I feel it's going to help out, protect the roadway, and, you know, prevent any cracking or issues, you know, long-term after construction.
Any public comment? Anything else from the board?
Just to follow up, I actually have to check. Did you guys add those signs that we talked about the last meeting? The no left out of the site for construction vehicles, and we, there was, I had asked if, I mean, when you're leaving the site, there's a no left, so people don't drive into that bridge.
If I remember correctly, you know, like, all these signage will be a-
Temporary.
Well, it would temporarily, they will all be put into the construction drawings.
Yeah, that's fine, too.
I think that'd be, yeah, more or less part of the package that the subs get for the access front, too, you know, it'd be one of those big things, yeah. They'll learn quick, once they see that bridge coming. Do your best, some people don't listen.
So what are we looking for now, Matt?
Well, it's up to the board. The only two things I see kind of hanging out here now, and I got to give Mr. Fassandola a credit, Level Design, you guys have done a great job designing this and presenting to us and making this easy for us to understand, so thank you for that. And that being only two things left hanging is the guy comes tomorrow. Our board's been very adamant on making sure CONCOM's satisfied first prior to the board's vote, but the only other thing being the Town of Lester, just to make sure that they're satisfied, because we talked about, I can put a general condition on here to say to make sure that the Town of Lester is satisfied, or whatever they do, you know, the applicant has to follow, but they could turn around and say, "No, we don't like it at all," and then we're, and then we're back to square one, so we'd be completely out of the realm of possibility, so I just like to make sure that those two things are handled, and then I'm absolutely satisfied with what's been presented.
Continue the hearing?
If the board is so inclined.
Make a motion to continue the hearing to April 10th?
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Just those two things. We'll get CONCOM tomorrow, I'll notify them to peer review satisfied here tonight.
Yeah, because I know that, you know, we've been to every, you know, every single medium in conservation committees, I know they want the word canceled, and they use very straightforward, like, you know, we're fine with the project, just give us a final plans, okay with Graves, and then we'll make a decision. So if we, if Conservation Commission is able to make a decision tomorrow, let's say the project's approved, we'll be able to make a decision on the planning work- on the planning work.
I think so. Yeah. And you know what? Another thing I could do, since we're this far along, I could put in a draft form of the conditions circulated and make sure that we're all satisfied with the language, at least for the special conditions in addition to standard ones. And we can go over that stuff, the fight to come at the next meeting and be ready to take over.
Yeah, that sounds good.
Through the chair, that's 150% on the performance bond?
We can decide that.
Okay. And the SMART program, which they probably wouldn't start until the end.
Decision.
Oh.
I'm just wondering who's?
Yes, good point.
So the special permit of the zoning board?
Already has something in place. I don't know if you guys want to see the wording.
I think it's their, they have a condition for the bonding.
Oh, great. So we can reflect the same.
So, okay, yeah.
Exactly.
Were you copied on those decisions?
Like we're not.
I was going to say, probably not. We can get your copies of those.
Yeah, I'll say the copies and make sure that, no, I'm trying to.
Yeah, just so, yeah, we don't want one to say one thing and one to say another thing, just kind of keep it consistent with, you know, it's easier for everybody that way.
Great.
I know that was one of their big items when we were, when we met with them.
Did they happen to put construction hours on it too?
I don't think we did.
I hope not. All right, okay. It's supposed to be that. Cool. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you very much.
Great.
All right, thanks.
Thank you very much.
I'll tell the commission tomorrow, and hopefully that goes on swimming line.
Absolutely.
Right now.
Thank you very much.
We need that on the net.
Yeah, I am. I love it.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, yeah.
Thanks.
Ready to move on?
Yeah, I don't know either. Next up, the 7:50 PM applicant, SWE B Development USA, requesting site plan approval under section 9.4.1 of the Auburn's on it by law, the development of a six-megawatt full voltaic solar installation at 430 Rochdale Street, continuing here in February 27.
Yes, sir. Good evening. My name is David McKay with Weston and Sampson, here on behalf of SWF Development USA, to talk about the project here.
Before you get started, I just, I guess, false. So what we have with this solar project on 430 Rochdale Street, we have a six-megawatt facility. But this has also already been approved by the zoning board, and it's already been approved by the conservation commission. This doesn't involve the amount of clearing as the last project did. In fact, I think it nearly involves even more wellings than the last project did. What we have is a complete peer review that's been followed up on, and there's still two of us, any comments which I believe are, and we'll go and address today. One of the issues that had surfaced today, as I was trying to review these plans, was the last set of plans I got was submitted with the application. And the plans had been going back and forth with the peer review consultant, but I hadn't seen them. So the latest set of plans, and I asked David to bring these in today, and he had, so those have been distributed to us this evening. I understand the board members have not had time for review of these plans, and likely continue this hearing for that matter. But I still felt it was important, since the applicant's going to be here today, to address the remaining and outstanding items within the peer review, so that we can focus on the rest of the project. Okay?
Thanks. So I'll just quickly run through each sheet of the plans. This is the revised set that's been through peer review with Graves and addressed their comments. We haven't received the confirmation on the last two comments, but they were simple revisions, so don't foresee any issues with that. This sheet just has some general specs on the proposed racking system, the proposed electrical equipment, solar panels, and some general specifications for the project. And that also applies to this sheet with general construction notes, notes regarding seeding of the site in disturbed areas, specified shape mix for within the solar development, because of the shape of the panels, and then maintenance of the seeded areas, and the responsibility of the contractor to have a fully stabilized site at the end of construction. Okay, this is an overview of the existing conditions on the site with aerial photo in the background. The total parcel area is about 120 acres, and the total solar development area is about 20 acres. The access will be from the High Street right of way, right here into this lower field, with a proposed access drive running up the ridge line. You can see the old cart path from the farm equipment running up along that same location. So generally following the path that's been used for access to the site under existing conditions. And our proposed clearing areas are this area of dense brush and woods in the interior of the site on the steeper slope, and then just along this area in between the two fields, north and south. On the sheet, you can also see in blue where the wetlands and wetlands buffers are. And so all the proposed construction activity is outside of that 100-foot wetlands buffer. This is just a finer scale view of the, of the site, existing conditions. And then a little bit closer, the north half and then the south half. So now we have the proposed erosion control plan for the site. We have the proposed construction entrance off of High Street at the end of the pavement there, a perimeter straw waddle around the entire site, and then intermediate waddles along the area to be cleared on the steeper slopes within the site. And then this crosshatch area shows the amount of clearing on the site. So the clearing will extend a little bit more to provide a little bit extra area for some solar panels, and then also to provide some clearance for any shading concerns from the trees. Now, it's the same setup, just a finer scale view of the proposed clearing and erosion and sediment control measures. These would be what's installed at the initiation of the project. That's not good.
Thank you guys for that.
It's a thick set of plans.
Okay, so now we have the overall proposed construction plan for the site, site development. The contours are at a one-foot scale, so that's why there's so much black blobs going on here, but that's the proposed grading. The racking system that they've selected has a maximum slope of 20% that can be installed on. So these areas are just the few steeper areas on the site that need to be either cut or filled to meet that requirement. Also, we have the proposed grading for our stormwater management system, detention basins, and swales on the pretty much most of the perimeter of the site. And then those detention basins will be installed at the initiation of the project in order to allow for them to be used for sediment traps during construction, especially with the grading going on above. And in this portion particularly, the area's going to be cleared, then the grading will be started, and then the intermediate measures, erosion control measures be installed as the grading is completed. This just looks a little better here, 40 scale. The northern portion of the site, see the proposed panels, got the detention basins A1 and associated swales, another longer swell running down to detention basin A2, and then detention basin B on this side with the swell. And the proposed grading to allow for the installation of solar panels, and additionally, the proposed grading to allow for the construction of the access driveway with a maximum slope of 15%. And the hammerhead turnaround with a maximum slope of 4%. This is the area that's the bulk of the earthwork. Just this area where the existing brushy area is, is pretty steep. So that's just to get to that 20% slope requirement for the racking, additional grading for the driveway. And in the steeper portions of the driveway, where it is running at 10%, 15% slope, we're proposing to install water bars or brunt-based dips in the gravel to intercept runoff that's running down the driveway and prevent any erosion of the driveway due to long concentrated flows. And that's just down to the southern portion of the site with the entrance area. And right here is the closest to the, to the wetlands, and we're right at that 100-foot buffer with the limits of clearing and grading. And there will be that perimeter straw waddle that's streaming around the entire site. Just additional grading for the driveway to meet the slope requirements. And within the solar array area up here, and stormwater runoff will be intercepted in a low spot right next to the driveway from this portion of the site and sent down to the other detention basin. And then this is just a general overview of the site with the proposed solar panels shown on here, as well as the proposed grading and stormwater management. And this is the zoning plan identifying the abutters and then the zone of the site, which is residential R. And now to the construction details showing proposed racking and solar arrays, the anticipated gate and chain link fence around the, around the site. General layout of the equipment pads that'll be installed on site. And then to the site details with the installation requirements for the straw waddles, detail for soap fence if that is determined to be needed, and some specifications on the straw waddles. Detail for the proposed construction entrance with the mound at the, this is the pavement to prevent runoff from running out through the driveway and then into the roadway. And the construction detail for the proposed gravel access driveway. These are some details for the electrical conduits that'll be installed on site, different options for how that may be addressed. And then a detail for the water bar in the gravel And then finally, construction details for the stormwater management measures. Have detail for the riprap sections on the detention basins and the pipe outlets, a detail for an underdrain or curtain drain if during construction we do encounter groundwater. This will be installed to keep those detention basins dry. Detail for the proposed intercept swales, drainage trench, the riprap apron at the outlet of the drainage pipes. Construction detail for the berms associated with the detention basins, emergency spillway, trash rack, and for the outlet control structures in each detention basin. So that's where the plans are at right now. And Matt had mentioned that Graves Engineering had two additional comments that we addressed on, we received those on Friday, addressed those on Friday. That was, one was related to the steepness of the discharge pipes from stormwater basins A and B. The slopes were steep running with the existing grade of the land, and they had some concerns about the discharge velocities. So we lowered the inlet end of those pipes, got them down to a shallower slope to better control the velocities of the stormwater to be discharged, to meet the 10-foot per second for less reference that they had. And then the other revision was with the height of the storage volume in the detention basin B, we need to provide one foot of freeboard above the maximum water surface elevation in a 100-year storm. And so I just had to bump that elevation up by three inches to achieve that. So we revised the plans to meet those comments in revision three, March 23. Prepared a revised stormwater report, had no impact on the actual results. The peak flow rates leading the site, both to this wetland system to the west, wetland system to the east, and to the pond against High Street are all controlled. So the peak flow rates post-construction are less than those during pre-construction conditions. So that's the presentation of the proposed site plans for the project.
Anything else from you, Matt?
I'm sure I do. I have a few notes, but if you want me to head on mine first, I don't mind. So do you know if the Auburn Fire Department had reviewed the hammerhead turnaround for solar just apparatus?
I do not know. I can find that out for you though.
I don't believe so. It's just, it's been so long in between having plans and the original submission. So I don't know if they ever got to see anything like this. So I think they should review that to make sure their apparatus can turn around. In addition to that, hammerhead turnaround, they might want to look at some of those 90-degree driveway turns, like that big S turn in the middle there. It's like an S turn. To scale, it's probably massive, but just by looking at it here, it looks tight. So I just, I'd look for Captain Greddmore to take a look at this, just from their perspective. This is the first time, and I kind of defer to John a little bit on this, water bars. I've never seen these before, so.
Neither have I.
Okay.
It's going on me.
All right. So we might have the same question there. But do you mind, David, to explain kind of what those?
Yes. Used a lot in like forest, foresting projects, forestry, or gravel mining operations, because those roads take a lot of abuse and tend to be pretty long, steady runs. So we just have the width of the roadway here, and then it's a shallow excavation in the roadway. So it's a dip about six inches or so. And then that material then forms a berm on the downhill side. And the dip is about six feet long, the berm's about six feet long. So they're not steep drop-offs, they're just gentle transitions. And what that allows us to do is capture the And what that allows us to do is capture the stormwater that's running down the gravel driveway and send it off into the grassed areas. So, you know, these will be spaced every 100 to 200 feet depending on the steepness of the driveway, and it just breaks up the flow paths of the water to help prevent erosion, and then also helps prevent, you know, water just picking up speed down a long, steady slope, and then especially the entrance to the site, running out into the travel way.
I just, just want to hit on those real quick before it goes to the board, and I have a few others if I don't mind hearing them.
You like to space it out?
Yeah, I want to hear what some of the other members have to say, they might have some of the same questions.
Mr. Ren?
No questions on mine.
Back to the water bar detail. Is that a 45-degree angle across the road? Because the way this is drawn, it's tough to tell whether this is profile or plan.
Yeah, it's kind of a, sort of isometric maybe, but it's one-half to one, so it would be about 20 degrees or so.
On an angle across the road. So there's a six-inch dip before it?
Yes.
Then you hit the gravel, and you come off it. So my question is, how long is that six-inch hump going to last with trucks coming up and down during construction work?
Well, during construction, this is one of the construction period erosion control measures, so it would be a maintenance issue.
Constantly maintained.
Post-construction, it should be pretty enduring, because there's not going to be much traffic going in and out of the site since it's completely...
The other question I had was your entrance into High Street. See if I can find it here. Here with me, this is my first time seeing this.
Sure.
I think it's on D3, right?
Yes.
I see where you have the stone pad for getting the mud off the truck tires and all that, the three-inch stone, correct?
Yes.
And that's 50-foot minimum?
Yes.
Okay. My question is, when you get to the apron, I see the mound that's supposed to protect the edge of the road.
Yes.
I really don't think that's going to protect the edge of the road with some heavy equipment going in and out of there. You're going to break the edge of the road, and then you're going to be on the hook for fixing the edge of the road, which the DPW director would probably, I'm not speaking for you, Bill, but make you cut the whole width of the road out and pave the whole width of the road for a certain length. I'm just...
Well, I appreciate the heads up, and in that case, I think we would propose a paved apron, and then move that into the site to protect the edge of the road.
Yep, just finding where to protect the edge of the road better, and then you have your, and it gives the trucks that much more distance to get the mud off the wheels, because try as we may, try as we might, three-inch stone just does not get all the mud off the trucks. I witness it daily.
Can you talk a little bit about the panels of those? Are they highly reflective, or are they, is there a glare? How does that affect the people around it?
I would have to defer to Michael Carey from SWEB to provide a good answer to that question.
Okay.
I do believe they submitted a glare analysis at some point to possibly the zoning board.
Oh, I must have missed that.
Yeah, it was an anti-glare panel.
It's an anti-glare panel?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Any public comment? Yes, young man in the front.
I am near butter.
Name and address, please.
Ronald Brooks, 425 Rochdale Street. Couple of things. I just wanted to see, there's supposed to be an area across from me that doesn't have any panels?
Yes.
Can you show me exactly where that is?
I will do that. I believe this is your property? And then this is the area that's preserved without any panels?
The edge of the existing deep brush, is that the existing?
Yes, yeah, this line right here is the...
Over to beyond, beyond that little mud that Mike and I identified.
Okay.
This is all vacant.
This will all be clear with panels, yes.
And this is the same area?
Yes.
Yes, sir. And, no questions? You're not scraping, I don't think he said he was taking any ground cover or disturbing the ground at all, other than the brushed area, which they would clear the brush, pull out the roots, and then reseal.
Right, the, there is, this sheet here pretty much identifies the limits of where there's going to be ground disturbing activities. Each of these dark lines represents the proposed grading for the site. So we do have the grading associated with the driveway, where they'll strip the top soil and bring in the gravel, grading associated with the detention basins, which will be a similar process, and then also the grading for these few steeper areas throughout the site.
We cannot take any loom off the area or anything like that?
Not for export, no.
Not for export.
They would strip the top soil, like for this area, for example, they'd strip the top soil off, use excess materials from the cut areas on the site to fill this to the required slope, and then put that topsoil that they stripped right back.
Because it's all clay.
All clay.
If you're going to be digging, putting roads in and stuff, it's all clay that I know.
Okay.
And a high water table.
Yeah. It's not too shocking, I guess, especially that brushy area. Wouldn't be surprised if there was a reason it was brushy.
We dug one time, and at the top of the hill in August, it was only about 50 inches down, at the very top, the water table.
So we will be installing those curtain drains around the detention basins then?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, Mr. Penning?
Sorry, just, like I said, a member from one of the original presentations, are there improvements or at least paving happening to High Street for a restoration? What are you guys doing to that section of road? Or what does the improvements begin? Is it at the end of the street just for access? Are you guys keeping High Street as-is? Were there any changes? How's it in the apron?
At this time, with this plan, there's no proposed changes to High Street.
Okay.
The proposed access is at the end of, end of the pavement area.
Okay.
When you say end of pavement, where you come off Rochdale and you go up before you take a right into Curran's house?
Yes.
And it starts to climb, go to the left, it goes into that field?
Yes, so our entrance is...
Starts to climb up, and then go into the field, or the big field on the right?
The end of pavement is going to be right here, and that's where the woods road starts that goes into the existing kind of access pass between the two fields.
But there's like an existing footprint of old High Street?
Yes.
Runs on the western side of the top of the field.
Yes, so ours is where that starts, we're going to be taking a left if you're looking towards that old woods road or the old High Street, and then come into the lower field here.
So you won't be improving any of that, because it's really rough?
Right, yeah, there's no plan to improve that. That portion is running up through here, so we will cross it and then continue up to the top of the hill, but the access through that is not part of the project. That's just going to be left, as is, the trees will be cleared, but the existing access way is not proposed to be used.
You, I think that, through you, Mr. Chairman, that there's, what you might look at is because the water does come down that road, and goes down and washes out the sides of the road, which Curran paved, I believe, it goes into the pond there, deposits lots of silt, and washes the whole side out. There's quite a flow that comes down there.
We do have, where our road crosses it, we will be intercepting the runoff from above that portion. So this portion here, sorry, this portion here is outside of our project limits from the end of High Street, and then where our road crosses it, we will have a pipe with a flared end to collect that runoff and send it into our detention basin. So this portion at least will no longer be following that path out of the site and into High Street.
So that detention basin is on the lower east of that left-hand field?
Yes.
And then the next thing is maybe a little bit of land and then the ponds?
Yes, there's about 300 feet from the edge of the detention basin to where the pond is.
To where the pond is.
Yeah. That's going to remain undisturbed by the project.
That's Rochdale, that's Rochdale Street, right?
Mm-hmm. That's been paved.
So the road's not paved?
And that's been paved, too.
This is seven years old, this image.
Okay, so what are we going with this, Matt?
My whole thing about paving doesn't really hold water, it's a dirt road.
It's paved.
It must be paved.
It is paved.
Oh, it's paved, no?
Yes.
They paved, the people paved it.
Curran's. Wow.
So, understanding it is private way, still want to make sure that a fire truck can get down there, whether it's one-way or not.
It's not wide, but it's...
One-way or...
How wide is the, well, that section, you have a, how wide is the hammerhead for the turnaround?
Yeah, that's a good question.
How long is it?
But, I mean, ultimately, assuming I'll take the electronic PDF of this plan, provide it to the fire captain, and he can determine whether or not he thinks this is feasible.
Sure.
If he goes to tell me that I need a 28-foot wide High Street, and I tell him it's a private street, we'll see where that goes. But I can at least start the dialogue.
Is it private? The town plows it?
That doesn't mean anything. Usually they, they'll plow a private road for emergency access if there's houses on it and people living on it, so that's just for public safety reasons. Some towns don't do that at all.
Correct.
Our DPW likes to keep these folks safe, so. So the outstanding things I'm seeing, obviously, the Auburn Fire Department for the roadway makes sure that they find those widths to be sufficient. I did find something that's more comical than anything, but you might want to change Crow Hill to add an L, it's Crowell Hill, before Mr. Brooks finds that as an error on the plan.
Thanks, keeps it caught up in red tape for another couple years. I appreciate the heads up.
But I'm glad to see that the peer review was satisfied, and our peer review consultant did identify those two items seem minor enough where they could be conditions of approval if they're not addressed prior to the board's vote, so I just, number one, make sure the fire department is okay with this, and if there's any changes to the bends or the turnarounds, I hope they would have identified in the peer review, however, I'd still like the fire department to review that. The erosion control measures, at one point you mentioned straw waddle and the possibility of silt fence if the board wanted to require both. I assume that one of these sides, it's the upgrading side, it probably won't need the silt fence, but I assume that the lower grade, possibly just the lower grade perimeter might need the silt fence, just as a resort, I suppose, but not throughout the entire site, I don't believe, but that would be my recommendation.
Sure.
Phasing-wise, assume we're going to be building stormwater areas first, as not as much clearing you can get, or creation of this roadway to get to, what do you call this? A1 and B1?
It makes sense in the stormwater quarter.
Yeah, so I assume those are phasing pieces before, and those two, well, the roadway and the stormwater management is completed prior to clearing of the site.
Yes.
All right, and the erosion control measures are set before clearing. So the other thing that was mentioned with the other project that Mr. Chairman was just bonding for decommissioning, we want to be consistent with that to make sure that there's a bond for decommissioning the site once it goes, after 20 years, assuming or 30 years, however long it's active, but in case of the event that it gets abandoned, we want to be able to have the funds to remove the array. And I'm going to have to look into High Street a little bit just myself. You may need, if improvements are needed, but I want to see what state it's in, because if you're going to be required to repair it as needed for what's done, you might need consent from your letting landowners, so I just want to look into that, too. But otherwise, the Conservation Commission was satisfied with that end, with their end of this, so I'm satisfied with that as well. Those are my outstanding items, otherwise I'd recommend it. Oh, oh, I'm sorry, one other thing, because Mr. Carey and Mr. Rosenblatt were not here this evening, I also wanted to recommend continuance so that we can button up all remaining items with them in their presence, so we can do it collectively, so. I certainly appreciate, David, for being here today to go over the engineering things with us, so thank you.
Welcome.
Thank you for having me.
I think we have one more quick question from the audience.
Yes, in the past, what I think when they spoke to you, they talked about not cutting any further trees down on the lower end or from where the top of the field is, towards me, any of those trees would not be cut.
Okay. Could I get further on that?
Yep.
Mr. Chairman, that's actually a condition of the zoning board, right?
I'm not sure if they put that in.
Okay.
But that no trees from coming towards me easterly would be cut down on the lower end or from the top of the field easterly towards my property or towards Rochdale Street, in any part of the property there.
The proposed clearing limits are along the former High Street access, and then this is in order to install a detention basin there, so that looks a few hundred square feet?
That looks pretty minor, yeah.
That period right there, you have nothing in here.
Yeah, correct. Yeah, nothing, nothing in there.
So can we have that as a condition?
Easily. Clearing is limited, see what's shown on the board.
None of this is forgot tonight's vote, though.
Correct.
So if the next meeting makes sense, is that the continuance I'm looking for, or do you need longer?
I believe so, just to get feedback from the fire department and for me to look into the private or public nature of High Street. Assuming it is private, I just want to make sure we don't need consent from landowners to require improvements.
So looking for a vote for continuance to the next meeting?
Make a motion to continue to the 10th hearing.
Do I have a second?
I have a second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
I have to use continuance for...
I do. Just submit your...
No problem. Thank you. Thank you all for your time this evening. See you in a few weeks.
Mr. Chairman, I know we've reached the end of the meeting, but I realize I made an error during one of our public hearings, I just want to make sure that we cover it during these zoning bylaws, please. We're actually in motion to open or motion to close, so.
Make a motion to open the zoning bylaw.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
It is a vote?
On a motion to close.
And a motion to close the bylaw?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, we have an 810 public hearing.
Oh, right, yeah, that's right.
The applicant is Masad Family LLC requesting modification of site plan approval on the section 9.4.1 of the Auburn zoning bylaws for parking, landscaping, and site layout reconfiguration on property located at 54 Faith Ave. This was continued from February 13th, 2018 at the applicant's request. Do I have a motion to open the public hearing?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, it's an ongoing continued hearing, but what we have is, usually I receive a request of continuance in advance of the meeting. In this case, I hadn't received one, but I also didn't reach out to Mrs. Chairman Diamond until today. Knowing all along this public hearing was to be continued until after town meeting, I assume I'll probably get his, "Sorry I'm late to respond to this tomorrow," but the board, when you don't receive a continuance, technically you can vote to close and do whatever you want with it, or you can vote to continue with the next meeting. you want with it, or you can vote to continue at the next meeting, excuse me, and notify the applicant of what's intended to continue.
April 10.
Correct.
So we have a motion to continue this hearing to April 10.
I'll make that motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
It is a vote. Anything else, Matt? Anything else, Scott, John, Wendy?
No, sir.
Jason. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Make the motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Wow, you're great.